To our June planning meeting, today is Tuesday the 13th of June. And first item on the agenda is 7023 declarations of undisclosed junior interest. None declared, obviously if there are any arising, please state them at appropriate time. Seventy one twenty three apologies for absence, Alan.
Yes, councillor Pitts Brooks, councillor Doug Jefferson, councillor Terry Jeremy, councillor Chris Peters and councillor Eddie Stewart.
Thank you very much. So seventy two twenty three, the minutes to confirm the minutes of the planning committee held on the 18th of May 2023, which we received by full council on 30th of May, and we're all happy with that, John. Sign those as a true record of meeting. Read?
Yep.
Seventy three twenty three, planning applications. First one is a dear sleep thirty eight Norwich Road.
So this is a variation of condition two on the original application form. And one one two was actually approved set of plans, but they want to amend the site layout to include the installation of the substation onto site and the repositioning of the car parking layout, bin store and cycle store. So this is the basic site layout, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. And this is the new proposed layout. Now, they have gone out to the police and the police have made recommendations about bike security. And there have been previous comments about cycle racks and things which they have now moved and made more secure. So they've, and they've changed the cycle storage area because it was covered over and that tends to attract antisocial behaviour. So they have already made some, some changes and there's a few more recommendations about the bike security, such as the type of cycle stands that they have. There was documents sent to Historic England and Anglin Water, but both of those said that it wasn't appropriate for them to comment on the application form. So this is the substation that they want to put in, if you looked in on the previous comment. We've got the substation. Up in that top left corner.
Which has been built at the moment.
Yes. Yeah, so that's the substation that we're looking at. And this is the substation. That's not very exciting, that's the elevations and the floor panel of the substation. And the car park, I'm just trying to remember from the previous, what's, I think they've just changed it around where the bin stores were, isn't that? With the car parking layout, is that the top? Yeah. Because they've just moved them slightly.
That's the Norwich Road where you, it's all headed for that.
Yeah. Any comments?
Whereabouts is the pillbox?
It's down the bottom right there, it's the rectangle a bit away in front of you.
That's still maintained.
Thank you.
Still some armpit. Just on the front elevation with the, they just louvers on that substation. They say what colour they are.
I'll have to go and read it off there because that is way too small.
Because that is obviously fronting onto the road and is part of the streetscape, so.
Alternative roof design to harmonise with adjacent premises are acceptable, providing they still have the standard, completely smacked be total now, in all cases, if both businesses are in full consideration. It's a vanity now, fitted extremely.
What would be needed to complete it to the stage of it?
No. Is this all about clearance?
Access line should be filled or?
Do we want to make any comment about colours on that? If it's moved bright green or do we want?
I think they've just changed that because that's the highlight.
It's been disfigured, yeah.
I don't think it's actually going to be that colour.
Any other comments? Happy to support. Yep. Moving on then to number B, four to six Castle Street. Um. This is it. Okay.
So it says a change of use from class E commercial business and services, sorry, class E C to class E B cafe, to the ground floor areas with internal operations and new business signs and a use of class C three residence or flats to the first floor. So a high road writer said it was noted that there's no onsite parking facilities exist for the residential element of the proposal. However, given the town centre location, proximity of public transport and public car parking, it would be difficult to substantiate an objection in this respect. If you're minded to grant approval, please impose the following conditions. And they highways have some standard conditions that they put in, an S D H fourteen is one of them. And that is that no part of the structure to include the faces shall overhang or encroach upon the highway land and no gate door, ground floor window shall open outward over highways because of highway safety. The environmental historic heritage, no, environmental health officer had concerns about the lack of bin storage. And he said that for the proposed domestic properties, it would appear that the plan submitted for that intention is to be stored outside the window of the neighbouring residential property and in front of the existing street name, which is not acceptable. Says he accepts that visitors to the proposed cafe would not like to see the household waste bins immediately outside the cafe windows. And the only other frontage to the premises would be in front of the access doors. He does question whether it means it would be acceptable to store four bins outside the window of the neighbouring residential property. Should the applicant be able to provide more suitable solution to domestic waste storage in respect of the residential properties? And then he would recommend approving the development needs in line with the application details. But he does feel they need to alleviate his environmental concerns. His comments also based on the fact that the signage is not illuminated, will not be illuminated. And that he doesn't want illumination or interest of the amenities of nearby residents.
Still prior insurance place.
It is, yeah.
So let me just go across into the next ones for you. Oops, not doing it. This is where it finally does it and it moves like three at a time. So that's the site area. These not particularly good plans that we were given.
Quite helpful.
Yeah, so that's our existing elevations.
So I think that's, you know, on the.
That's probably the better one.
Pretty, as you say, it's the old prior insurance building.
Yeah, there's the picture of it.
Been a notice up cafe opening, certain for the last couple of years been stuck up there. Yeah, I think that bin thing was quite pertinent, given our last conversation we had last month.
Yeah.
So I think that would be a big one for us to object on. Seems to be grand sort of feeling amongst ourselves last time round about the lack of bin storage. But over the floor.
I also made an issue about parking, I'm highly concerned, imagine we've got the cafe at the top of Castle Street now. And then that roundabout is becoming signalway traffic, because there, if we had a parking outside that cafe, opposite to that link road, that's an extra weight to have. And the bins as well. I mean, we've all seen the issues with the people who've been outside, the delicatessen on the money, when they put it out there, they put it on the pavement. The bins on the pavement, they've got to be industrial, because these bins aren't like not normal waste bins for the cafe. So what about notability screeners and that kind of stuff?
There's already lots of complaints from residents about the amount of bins that are placed up all down Castle Street. So that's, it's already an issue. And by us passing it, I think it makes it worse. But that, it makes reference only to the property bins rather than the commercial. So we could end up with a situation like we have out on King Street here, where we've got what would appear to be household bins being used for commercial waste. You know, constantly full.
The cafe, will the, will the commercial bins be at the back though, anyway?
There's no access to the back there. The archway, the archway that you see is for a separate property to the right, that is completely separated from there. So there's no access to the rear at all, thankfully.
There's a bin issue anyway for the cafe.
This, this reminds me of the one we looked at that was planned to be built at the, at the back of Pike Lane Car Park. When we mentioned that they were going to say they were going to park all their vehicles on that car park, because that's great. Well, of course, the link car park would be the ideal opportunity for people living in there to get free parking. Again, we're so restricted on parking in the town.
The link parking is quite well used as it is, that's quite full. So I sense the objection.
Yeah.
Yeah. On the grounds of the environmental health officer.
Well put, potential comment to consider is support the environmental health officers concerns reference bin storage and expect alternate solutions to be found. Waste bins on Castle Street footpath are already an issue with residents and, yeah, residents and visitors.
And I think we also want to raise the parking issue again. Yeah.
And so. What would you like to say about parking?
It will put extra pressure on existing car parking in the area, which is already short supply.
The lack of.
Yeah, double yellow lights. Sorry, Paul, sir.
The lack of onsite parking. Exacerbate current conditions. Yeah. Or exacerbate current shortage of parking.
And then is the cooking bag though? So I mean, could it be if they're cooking, they're going, then where was that beast positioned?
I, you've not seen it, it's all been, enough of the show.
Expect one of those, it's an afterthought, it'll come back as expected, the link going through the wall.
But this is a change of use one as well, isn't it, with the post to a full.
Yes. Be right, if there's a cafe, there will be some, whereas the insurance brokers didn't need anything. And might play wrong, you know.
I think the serial alcohol licence for the cafe as well.
It's not, that would, that would be a licensing issue that would come separately. At the moment, there's nothing, neither can, that would be so.
Well, that's, that's not a full planning application, it's only a piece.
Would you have, so how you see that, is whether you want to put the same way at the top of Castle Street?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's not, that's the part, you know, they want to, it's, it used to be, you don't need to work there, so we have that.
That was a bad junction, as this is, as they're coming out. We also need to back up the highways by the conditions that we have on the, in the overhang signs.
Yeah, and support highways.
Oh, sound that?
No, I can't see it, yeah, mate.
That's interesting as well. But we mentioned that about.
For highways comments and key issues.
Yeah, I think that's actually about the, the lack of.
Units.
Extraction units.
Ah, yeah, lack of information on extraction. I mean, I'm, for one, I'm all for people being businesses, but the fact that they don't have access to the back and nowhere to put the bins, it just gives more of a space for them to go. Was a different operation, I'll be more for it, but there, it's just difficult.
Okay, so I think we've got enough there, happy with that. Right, moving on to number C, oh, there's a C. Barn Pike Lane, well, this is the one next door to the site that we discussed last one. So. Which I think, if I remember rightly, we had some correspondence from those people living.
Yes. So.
Sorry, Chris.
Sorry, the residents complained about the last, they're quite happy for this to go ahead because they've had issues with antisocial behaviour in this premises. Right, the landlord's done, we're going to stick it to terms and they're, they're hoping to go away there. They are in full support of this.
So this application is the proposed alterations to existing dwelling to form two separate dwellings. So to form the new separate residential dwellings, the internal layout only requires minor changes and the external envelope of the building only requires two new access doors being added in existed or extended openings. The footprint of the building does not change and the site around the building only requires minor changes to add another access gate into the garden space and to split the existing dwelling garden space into two. The existing historic features and merits of the building will not be altered. The beams visible within the interior are generally of decorative nature and not structural. It is understood that as part of the conversion works approved in nineteen ninety nine, two thousand, a new internal structured timber frame was constructed to provide stability to the external walls and to provide the new internal arrangement. The new dwellings look to utilise the existing building's layout and services, keeping the existing decoration and styles unchanged. Therefore, the change of use will have no detrimental effect on the listed building. So basically, they're splitting it into two. Internal additions obviously will be the party walls to split the dwellings. Removal of an existing bedroom on the first floor to allow for the stairs to access the first floor. Splitting it. And removal of existing ground floor bedroom to create a ground floor living room, kitchen dining space in the second unit. Additional entrance door to the front elevation to allow access into proposed unit two. An additional proposed rear door to the rear elevation and existing extended window opening to allow access to unit one. They're going to put a fence in to split the gardens and they're going to put additional gates in to actually allow access into both gardens. So again, that's the area there, this is where the actual dwellings are, that's where they're going to split the gardens. So the external elevations, that's the uh, something rear, and this is them putting in the extra two doors and extending the window. The historic building officer has no objection to the proposed minimal changes and they did have conversations and previous approval for the conversion in nineteen ninety nine.
So we've just come back to that where you've got to split the gardens.
Yeah, oh, that one.
Yeah. So B. The archway comes under where the one is, and then this area there, that is for presumably frontage onto Giddlesbrough, as it's, because their gardens are separate.
So that's where they're putting the extra bins.
Yeah, so the, the two gardens spaces that are on it, the archway comes through here to this access area here. That is for presumably, is it for Giddlesbrough? Or are these apartment spaces are planted to these?
I think it was just to get out of the back of the gardens.
Sorry, the part where you're pointing at, the house there, the two, there's two parking spaces in that place there. The, the house, the flat, people live, overlook the head, it's on the head, it's West Valley Park. And that big share is the front, yeah.
Yeah, so, so those apartment spaces are for.
And they're part of basic doors, they're back here, but the house back there, back there.
They're basically, they're. So that they can get out of that.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's parking, because obviously you're splitting it into two, so you have two dwellings there. Whether the parking thing just being provided or not.
Like, one of the concerns that I would have with something like that is that at the moment, the people that use there, it's almost like an HMO, the people, they don't have cars. Now you're putting it into two separate dwellings, that's going to be two, three, yeah, two cars per dwelling. You've only got two car parking spaces for the two properties. And you can keep talking about car parking, we keep talking about, you know, where the bin's going to go. And is that a consideration? Should be a consideration. But there's no, not enough car parking space for those properties.
I agree with you, Dave, it's, but the trouble is, when you look at some houses on Cloverfield, which is four bedrooms. They've got one space in front of a garage.
Yeah.
And, you know, you see the mayhem that that causes, so. I mean, I suppose in a way, at least they've thought about car parking spaces, you know, at least they've got some. I'm just not quite sure, as you were saying there, if, if that's just a turning area or where the division of that garden finishes off, because that's, that looks like it's just parking that.
I think that the vision is purely a little yard, isn't it, with a little fencing, so it's.
So they've just split the current garden.
So that communal area.
No, I've got that, but what I mean is.
What is that big area there?
So this bit here, so if they're going to drive in a park, surely this isn't.
That's why I was trying to get to.
Because if it is, they've got loads of parking.
Yeah, that's someone's background.
If we go back.
Precedent, stood there, you see when that garden comes, you see the square bit where it says the number?
Nineteen, nineteen.
Right, you see that, that's where it comes, and then that, all that space, the other side, your car park. So it hardly comes.
So that there is their car park, got it?
Fair enough.
So little, yeah. And to be fair, it's out of sight a little bit.
And they, they, it's locked as a gate across the front, so no one, you know, leaving.
Behind there, is it?
Yeah.
I, I've not been behind them.
There was some imagery last month when they were showing that over.
Yeah.
We could see it there.
I can show you the residents are more than happy to have this document, they have suffered with what's happened. The fact that they've been to the, they've been, some of the peer groups are removing, we're probably, the landlord's done it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no security there for the people that live, people moving in and out all the time, it's, it's a nightmare.
I sense we want to support, obviously taking on David's point about parking, but I think.
I support it.
At least we've got, you know, a space for each dwelling there. I think we're all supported, everybody's happy. Yeah, yeah. Do you? So there's two, so C and D there, because it is a listed building, they take the two plans separately, one for the listed building consent, one for law planning consent. So then on to E, forty five Mackenzie Road.
Right, so this is the demolition of the existing town building and erection of a timber prefabricated single story granite annex for ancillary use to the main dwelling. So. This application seeks to erect a single story granite annex within the curtilage of an established C three dwelling. The use of the annex will be ancillary to the main dwelling with strong functional links between. It is intended that the occupants will be regularly preparing and eating meals in the main dwelling, watching television, relaxing, socialising with the family and using two existing household facilities. There will be no separate address, post box, utility meters, services, parking, garden area or curtilage or access. This proposal is for an ancillary granite annex that will be existed within residential curtilage. And it is, for future occupancy, the applicant will be happy to agree to an appropriate condition restricting the use of the annex to only ancillary. So this is basically to accommodate the needs of a member of the family.
So they just mentioned the existing outbuilding being demolished, is that a, we've got any details that I can see there?
So this is the actual site. And this is what they're putting in, and this is by, I checked lots of companies. And I looked at what they do and these are very expensive annexes.
It's a prefabricated building.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, but it's, it's literally a drop in home. So it's, yeah, it's not a cheap, you know, we bought a log cabin, we're going to do it up, it is a, an actual.
Theory, it keeps them in, yeah, because it's quite a wooded area, isn't it, the King's Road? Yeah, from the back of it, even.
It's to the rear, so, yeah, so.
And like I say, they're happy to have any condition put upon them as is necessary because it is to meet the needs of a family member.
I think by not having a separate address and all that points to that, I think it's being used for that purpose. You know, at some point in the future, you don't know what's going to happen.
It's all used as a Airbnb type, I'd say, yeah. So that, you know, if, if they were happy to have that condition imposed, I would like that sort of condition imposed. Not for renting out like that.
Any other thoughts?
It's wrong, so they are demolishing one, replace it, probably extend it and wash those.
Take the old ones as irreparable, is it? Think it's probably not suitable for the use they've got, it's easier to just demolish an old outfield than actually something appropriate.
They're often like plastic answer, whatever the clothing, yes. And we have a family member that builds those and they're level access, so they're great for elderly people to move around and.
So I have it to support. Obviously, Dave mentioned a condition of not renting out, I'm happy to put that forward. Just ask what the objection is to that.
And I, I think there's enough Airbnb type properties, I think it'd be great to have proper planning for things and use the local B and Bs and local hotels where there's proper regulations.
As long as they give it meaning domestic use rather than commercial access. So support on the condition that the appropriate uh, no, support.
Yeah.
Subject to an appropriate condition restricting the use of the annex to only ancillary.
Yeah. For family or territory use.
Can I just ask if there aren't, if there isn't a separate address given to this, does that affect its ratable value in terms of the taxation on the property?
Normally, if it is a separate address, then there would be the valuation office would come in and they'd come and look at the valuation of that property here, it'll be added to the existing property when, if they ever do re-rate it. Usually, if you do make a major alteration to a building, then they will re-rate it. Generally, if it's just an ancillary, it's not really picked up.
This is a prefab in Aldmont could consider to be a very fancy shed.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's what it is.
There'll be additional demand on the, on resources though, with additional people living in the property.
Yeah, but they're saying there's no separate utility or services, so.
More rubbish generated and things like that.
That would all come under the main household's costs.
Are we happy that support, but ask the condition that it's main left us there? Do you, just repeat what we've got there?
Support subject to an appropriate condition restricting the use of the annex to only ancillary for family members.
Mm-hmm, agreed. Thank you. On to F then, Burns Close.
Right, so five five eight, this is a front porch infill extension plus internal garage conversion to habitable rooms. So this is the site map. Yeah, see the difference in these parts? So this is the proposed and this is, that's the existing, this is the proposed.
What's on the way, has got the similar extension to the build up?
The actual. Actually, that's, that's it, they're infilling the porch. And they're converting the garage into rooms, so there's no external changes.
Anything, see, if they're doing this garage, then there is another thing on parking, but generally people don't use the garages because they're too small for the cars that we can allow to take, so.
There's no additional.
Four units, comments? Happy to support?
Yeah.
Yeah. Now on to G, just the. Now on to G, just the.
So, uh, yeah, so this is the erection of one two bedroom dwelling in what was the, uh, Angler House Business Centre twenty four, twenty six Sixth Street.
Many years ago, this was Lloyd's Bank and, um, used by the grammar school for what, in recent years, it's been used as a business centre, service offices. It's, for those that know, it's a little cut through by the grammar school, um, which, as you know, the left is a bit of scrub area, which was mentioned at full council last time we, we met. Um, we have had this up before, um, and they, they tried to cram a few more dwellings in the back there which we objected to because of the, we put forward over development. Um, so this is purely the erection of the dwelling rather than the conversion of the existing building, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, um, there has been comments from the, um, uh, Historic Envision Officer, and that is along the lines of, uh, making sure that um, a correct programme of archaeological mitigatory work is put in place in accordance with the National Planning Policy Framework. Um, and basically that goes along the lines of no development shall take place until an archaeological written scheme of investigation has been submitted and approved by the local planning authority in writing. Um, and that no development shall take place other than according with the written scheme of investigations approved therein. So the, the request that a brief for the archaeological work could be obtained from North Council, Norfolk. A brief for what needs to be done in the archaeological work could be obtained from Norfolk Council. But they charge for their services.
The turning area, that's obviously the gate just before.
So that's going to back in there?
Yeah, so the, the little driveway comes up alongside that cut route and, um, it's quite tight when you get to the end there, yeah. But it's a king to what the previous scheme they were putting forward, what's, there's only one dwelling going in there now. Um, so obviously they've etched a little carving next door to it. And then keeping a couple of spaces to service the existing building. It's fine, that's all right, sir.
Do we have any thoughts of the piece of land that we have this issue with? Just anything to do with this?
No, I think that, I think you'll find that piece of land, but the, I mean, it still belongs to the grammar school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was going, oh, that's good, because we can put a condition on, they've got to take the seat and let it off, okay.
I've got some fat as well, yeah. They're not really very helpful.
No.
Yeah.
It's not, I don't know, really.
Looking at it, you think, oh, there's quite a big space, but I think there's. I already think it's really big. Because that, this is up that corner where the, the dwellings could go, but it's, um, got singles, you know, route in with the car. So they have to utilise that turning area to, to come out.
But is that property doesn't have any outside space or anything, does it?
No, it's just. We haven't got any detail raised down here. Is it just a footbridge and everything to?
So, um. So it is, what, that's in.
Or courtyard and a roof terrace.
Because it is literally, oh, it's got a tiny little slice of garden.
Well, that's where the car's going to go.
That's where the car, yeah, that's where the car is.
Ground drive with.
Okay, so when it goes on to this one, oh yes, all right, yes.
Yeah, so it's.
Although there is still a, a wee slice on there, isn't there? I know that, what's that little bit at the, uh? Two, please, I can't see it. Paved, oh, it's just usually block paved.
Block paved, yeah, with a couple of beans, that's.
Tiny path with a couple of beans.
So is this coming through just as a square footage of the property?
Okay.
Say.
So it is literally coming in and what's the, so back to the quest. Little space, so it is the erection of a two bedroom dwelling.
Everyone thought that would have been acceptable without any more deed, but.
This says in total, the site expected approximately six hundred and sixteen square metres with approximately three hundred and twenty five square metres being driveway. For that. So half, more than half of it is driveway.
But nothing. Now, literally, this is what I've got in here.
All right, that's, because sometimes you use the buildings to it. Well, the, the site is scheduled, so that will be, because it comes back, they've found in that vicinity quite a lot to do with the grammar school site. And that, that's why they need that archaeological dig, so it has to be a condition put on it. The frontage, I don't think is listed of the old.
Can I just clarify something? Has twenty four to twenty six already been approved as change to residential?
The rest of the area.
Twenty four, I think the existing offices has already been approved, changed.
I don't remember.
Change of use was granted, um, the consent was granted for the erection of a two storey dwelling to the rear in twenty fifteen. And change of use from offices to three residential apartments was in twenty twelve. And twenty twenty two was change of use from offices to residential.
So the whole thing is going to become residential?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh. No, so the existing offices would not, right, okay. That's going to be a bit more pressure on you.
If I can find any more on the portal.
So I remember this coming up, I can't remember whether it went through, but obviously it did.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm wondering if.
It's going to be interesting getting trucks down there, building lorries and things.
We're just wondering if this has come up because they haven't started the erection of the dwelling that was previously given consultation to, lapses over about three years. So they now have come back with this, um, whereas the conversion and stuff has happened and, you know, that's why. But because they didn't start on the, the new dwelling, then they, they can, um, provision lapses.
The layout says approved, well. Any prior change of use from offices to residential.
Yeah.
On there. That's, that's obviously expected intention, yeah?
So that's what's there now, isn't it? Oh, you can't see this one, no, and you see that's what's there now.
Oh, yeah.
So, look. So on, on the current twenty four, twenty six, which is a residential. Is that not up on there? It is up on there, yes. Two, how many of these?
Did it say three? Three, the existing building is converted to three.
Three?
Yeah.
And this is for the next, for, and what's the best? So that's.
There's another two, right.
So we've got a bit of detail on the layout here.
Right, so that's the one. No, let me just, let me just defant something fantasy. I mean, you think that three boxes are already there, yeah.
Yes.
It is up on the board.
Yeah.
Right. It's weird.
Yeah, fair enough.
Let me go back to my meeting. Going to just put this on, I'm putting in a name. It's hard to call.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think of the flats the girls used to rent.
Yes.
So it's a silly.
I mean, the, the one comment I would make on there, although there's other, you can see all the parking. There, this is part of the property, so that's, that's why I would be, so whatever happens.
Can you see these?
Yeah, we've got them, thank you.
Yeah, the, the only way they're going to get out is by reversing back out to.
Yes, so reversing out onto the bit, now if you think of it, that's the bit where the road narrows.
Yeah. Uh, and it's also the bit where there's a speed hunt and all the kids coming out of the schools.
Yes.
So that, that would be where I would object to it, I think it's not really suitable for the.
Yeah.
Isn't there a turning circle? Coming out of the.
There was a little turning circle.
Yeah, but that would fuck the idea, you can't sort of come in there and turn.
So here.
And go pointy end out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that not parking for the other residents?
I think that on the plan, they weren't earmarked parking for that specific area.
Go back to the plan.
That's not parking yet, is it? So there's, there's something to lean to or something that's still there, is that something you want?
It's been parking and turning.
Yeah, so there's.
Is that interesting or is that, and that goes to one of us?
Yeah.
Great interest. It just, it just show existing turning side, right?
It's parking intended.
I have the, just turning, go back to design. Think, right design, it's quite more interesting.
This one or that one?
Where you have the layout of the building.
Oh, I'm sorry, other way.
Yes, sorry.
We've got a roof terrace here. The bedroom for the grand floor, two bedrooms, and then you've got kitchen dining area upstairs with a roof terrace. And then I think you have more of a flat roof, is that on there?
Roof terrace overlook Roger Pigott.
There we go.
Roof terrace overlook Roger Pigott news, though.
Yes, it probably will.
Look.
So it's a, yeah, quite blockish.
It's down here, won't it?
Yeah.
Doesn't really add to the more, you know, architecturally.
The cubes, yes.
It was too crammed in there, too crammed in there, isn't it?
Yeah, so the, there are roof terraces places that, why not?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Funny that the kitchen turn on the top, but the one, but actually on the front, it's usually the other way around.
I think this would you give, uh, bigger?
Yeah.
So this would be, yes, would be. Yeah. So they could leave your mark, step for better views.
Well, I suppose if we had the, um, the lounge downstairs, there's no windows or anything, isn't there?
Yes. And that, and then this sounds a bit, I understand a bit stupid, but you've got a roof terrace overlooking a school, isn't that not a little bit? Maybe.
It's looking at the, uh, flats, the apartments of the building, that's actually away from you. The school building, that's not, it is a solid wall, like, potentially, I can't see how it's. But that's right, I mean, um, we've said about it. Is it, is there, the turning? Is so, well, well, really, uh, if you're sitting here, you know, they've got two minutes to talk. I did. I just don't think that the design of that is in keeping with the area.
Same. Thoughts, ladies and gentlemen?
With the three properties being put into twenty four, twenty six, this could be seen as over turned with that small area.
Why is currently there beans, around this wall, so for the crown three ones, and that one, I know they have a little paved path and there's, I'm assuming a little bit of.
Two little beans running.
Yeah, for the new one, but where is that currently, it's over, they're still around the wreck, isn't it, away from this new building?
They are round back.
But not, this wouldn't be like, I'm assuming it's being doctored.
So those courtyards, each would have a big, large spec within. And that's the, right. There's no possibility of access from, from the road.
It's blocked. Okay. It's a bit of a not one.
Hmm. It was also picked up on when they were doing the building works, where there's all the big lorries and stuff.
It's going to be hard.
It's not exactly why this road is there.
Probably, I don't think we can object to what happens in the building process, we can only object to the, the end result, so really that's for them to work out.
Just whether or not that practice went up, that's, that's a question, isn't it?
Firstly, do we want to object? Can I see, show hands in favour of, of objecting?
Yeah.
Now, three.
A bit too many.
Four, and those who want to support.
Okay.
Three, so we've got four against three, Chris and Hazel.
Don't worry about it, just you want, just for the, not fitting in, but you want to see it, really, because of the fact.
Well, you will see. Fair bit.
I'll switch to the objection. Basically, the point that there is very tight of parking, like Max said as well, that if you reverse it as well, then it's a very narrow road with all the kids in it from autumn in school. It is, it just becomes a danger area, um, you know, sooner or later, somebody gets distracted and maybe bother for putting cars in and out, it's going to be a consequence. It's just, it's just a lot in that small place.
I'm also a bit concerned about the fact the roof terrace does have a look like a boot. That has concerned me a bit, so I'd like the privacy and overlook it.
I'm not concerned about it, of course.
I, I can't remember how high the wall, um, goes. Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll look it.
So I think we've got a majority in favour of objecting. Do we then need to put the grounds that we are objecting? We've talked, somebody's talked about those developments.
It's a bit of a parking concerns regarding the, you know, I think we have access to, to the special property and back, assuming that it's a small, as a short street with, with a school beside it, so, I don't want to put. So in a narrow street, very well used with a, with a school with a lot of children crossing. So the fact that, so the people will, would be limited to argue that to reverse into the main road. So insufficient pa- parking or turning area for property.
Which would lead, lead to potential.
Property. And.
I ju- I just think if we were looking at this anywhere else, um, and that this development was added on to others, we would say it's massively overdeveloped because everything's so tight.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
So crammed in.
It's a small space, a lot going on there.
I'd just check from a process perspective, I would, I would have expected the highways to be, people would object on the grounds of safety, is that not why?
I can't think of one occasion where they've objected on a safety point.
Yeah, they're usually.
Not one. So a- as an example, when, you know, one of the places we always talk about is London Road, where you've got BM, where, you know, people can't get out, there's, you know, a lot of accidents on there, what people trying to rush out and all that, but it was suggested very early on, let's round about, or, or lights would make sense, they just, they don't see it as a problem.
Hmm.
They'll just wait their turn.
You mentioned that all the rubbish then on pickup day comes back, go back into the main road or to the front or the?
Been to have to be put out of Bridge Street. That's, all right, the Bridge Street collection.
So.
I don't think you can avoid that.
The fact, the fact that it'll be more rubbish.
Very good.
Roll on to the main road.
At some point, that require.
But at least they could be stored around the back, whereas the one we saw earlier with the Castle Street Cafe, there's just nowhere for them to be.
I was still checking and, and highways haven't entered the comment at all.
Not Chris.
Just having a look at the material, actually, separately, but overlooking lots of privacy, definitely think I'd object if there's something happen. Because I've got, and also may have a place of the utility. She said it didn't like the shape of the building and highway safety, try, park in.
Are you reading your material considering? Yeah, yeah.
Two house points to Chris. I think it's the architect's merits.
And I'm wondering, I mean, I swear enough to the terrace somehow, but was, this not property not abstract the vision from the current three there already there? The main building, only take like sunlight or, or vision.
I don't think there's much coming from that way, um, because it somehow would come from the safety.
This isn't what could be used on the current, do you want? So we've got over development, insufficient parking and turning area for property, layout and install the building, roof terrace overlooking neighbouring property.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah.
Well, we took that to a loss. I think highway safety comes in on that one.
Yeah.
Would emergency services have a problem getting to this property?
Assets in it, yeah, definitely have a lot.
They just stop on the road when they walk up.
Yeah. I suppose, it's a solution, difficulty they have to come in reverse, others would have to do the same thing. A solution. You live in my street and they'd have to run up the road anyway because you can't get anything up there. So if I might just have in front of the box.
I suppose the difficult thing for me here is, you know, when we object to it, and I do think I, I would object to it, what else would you do with it?
Yeah.
That's, that's the difficult thing, you know, what else would you do with it? How would you, how would you fix our? How would you, how would you fix our, our concerns?
Mike, I wanna be.
It's not when you insist, yes, maybe there shouldn't be anything.
Amen space for the existence.
They can come up with another.
Building there already.
Yes, but that's, could be left as an amenity space for the.
For the current.
The new.
The three, three. And I haven't been developed yet.
Here's that, got no, nothing other than courtyard.
Unless they need food and other dwellings to make it. Maybe.
Unusually viable.
To develop it, yeah.
I think it's probably just get as much as they can.
I think we're not.
I don't know. I, the, the architectural design, I think is something that I would like to, I think, that it's a flat roof, um, there's nothing else in that facility is. It's true, and I wonder if they've put up the flat roof so it doesn't get the height. If you look at it on there, the, the ridge of the, the property to the left. Is almost as high as the double one that with the front roof they're putting up, so if they went to a pitch roof, they would then make it probably too high, but I still think it's not in keeping with.
So that's layout and density of building with design, visual appearance and finishing materials.
Also by putting that flat roof, the, the way they designed it, they've given. Maximum use of that upstairs area, they've got an outside seating space, they've got windows, you know, that's. Um, I think they've done it very well.
But my opinion is another infill. Well.
That's what I think it is, that's why.
You know, I mean, you, you take the, the front building, so you let the, the buildings get into use because we don't want empty buildings, definitely, but to look at the back, you know, I think.
Yangle.
So I need to.
Do, do we need to limit ourselves to what we, we actually object about, because there might be just an awful lot of noise rather than a specific point we're making?
Well. I, I would say that, um. If we stick to the material considerations, they are stronger planning objections than other objections.
Okay.
So at the moment, you've got overdevelopment, the insufficient parking and turning area for properties are highways issue or, or as a safety issue. So you've got the layout and density of the buildings with a flat roof that should be changed to a pitch roof. And that the roof terraces overlooking local properties. There's another material consideration you feel is appropriate, would you want me to give you my thoughts? But then, but the, there's no complaint about that.
I'm not sure the insufficient parking and turning, it, I can feel like that's a bit harsh, they've got parking space and they've got turning space. Or a, or a small dwelling, I kind of feel like. But, you know, what, what else would we expect of that?
See, not a job.
Probably not.
Yeah. Town centre location.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no.
Plenty of public transport.
That park is not of the two consideration.
I could turn on that.
You've got that layer.
Yeah. And the flat roof.
These across the road.
Flat roof to a pitch roof.
Yeah, yeah. My design, building, not in keeping with everybody.
Not in keeping with surrounding, yeah. With character of surrounding.
So did we want to keep the parking thing that? Not that you.
I, I'm, I'm happy to leave it because, you know, otherwise we, we're just saying too many things, I think, you've got to be pointed in what we want to complain about and.
That's more.
I think that's, I mean, that's funny.
So overdevelopment, um, layout and density of buildings not in keeping with a character of surrounding environment. Anyone keep the roof terrace on?
Overlooking one.
Yeah, overlooking, I think.
Yeah. Okay.
Right, do we partner that there?
Uh, we just got a turning space to get out of it, I'll be fine.
You turn it.
Okay, move on to H then, um.
One oh seven six.
Just land to the rear of fifty seven Berry Road.
Yeah, so the conversion of annex and outfielding to two dwellings and erection of two dwellings. There's been a new vehicle access and provision of landscaping, and this is an amendment, and the amendment is the submission of the heritage addendum and agricultural implications assessment and preliminary methods phase. So our previous objections were overdevelopment with small house and amenity sizes. And we supported the highway officer's comments and conditions with the exception of Mill Lane's classification, which needed revision due to the large volume of traffic. Concerns about destruction of a scheduled ancient monument in a conservation area, which is why these reports were requested. And we supported Historic England's comments. Uh, several of the residents have commented particularly around road safety and potentially for one in twelve. Round, but I'm not quite sure whether that's evidence. And comments tend to reference displays, footpaths and roads being wide enough. And concerns, again, have been relayed about archaeological concerns about damage or loss. Potential attacks. These are the sites.
So in terms of, it's not changing anything that's previously done, this is purely submitting the heritage and then the, and the agricultural implications.
That's where they don't think that they're.
So they're jumping through a couple more hoops.
Yeah.
Um, to get this, um, through. So would we, um, be correct in stating we just reaffirm our existing objections?
You can do, one of those is about the historical, um. Area, so I guess it is whether they think that the, um. Submitted paperwork has reduced those. Heritage addendum, whether that has actually reduced concerns or not.
So that heritage addendum is purely just a background information part, then he doesn't make sure that they're gonna have watching brief or full dig.
Um. There's quite a bit of it, sixteen pages. So, um.
It's the very right. It's on the right, it's access to Mill Lane.
Yeah, so the heritage statement was used by which of it, do I think? So, uh, it just is the concerns raised by James Hobart of Ancient Monuments Historic England.
Can be, can be like what you wanted to do.
So this is the site of the ancient church, and it's not been excavated yet. Never been excavated, it hasn't passed yet, because they've banned, has it, or it's stuck yet?
We've not fully excavated, it's on the grounds of the church.
The old church.
So this is, it's an old.
So much.
Sorry.
That meant, so when they did Watermill Green, there was a big dig there, uh, and it's then a butt.
Right.
Back, so the proximity of the area lends itself to the, it could be something quite large there.
There was some bodies.
Really rare.
Keep it all full in, yeah. It says down.
It's going down, I can't remember with the.
The proposed route of the access road was subject to archaeological trial trenching undertaken by Britannia Archaeology in July twenty nineteen. And, um. The report has been submitted in support of the application, the evaluation successfully identified a cemetery which is probably not of self, uh, sent effort readers. Although no foundations or structural evidence of this church were present on the site. And any of the presence of flung fragments within the evaluation suggested the possibility of a large structure nearby. In response to directions from the Norfolk Historic Environment Services and Historic England, several barriers were lifted during the course of the evaluation. And those remain in the keeping of the Britannia Archaeology. So, um, Historic England has previously indicated that they had no objection in principle to the proposed development. And highlight that whilst it was likely the applicant would be able to use this area for access to development, it would be necessary for the road to be designated. So that it was above the level of any significant archaeological remains. This included the impact on foundations and any necessarily services. And Historic England advised that such design could amount any archaeological remains related to the church or human bones. It reserved in situ beneath the proposed access.
Hmm. So a floating road, yeah.
Yes.
Uh, this has been reported several times. Okay, I'm wondering now, due to the fact of my breadth of planning, when this comes up, I think I have to leave the room.
Yes.
Objecting on my comments, probably supporting the president. So I think I was in a predetermined or whatever the word is, I think, so I have to go away. But, I mean, we originally, we originally wanted the access to come up on the Berry Road, which we refused because it. So I would say no. Uh, the major issue to, you know, is the Mill Lane traffic. And that is the through busy road, and I don't, you know, I don't understand how Norfolk County Council pays a rural lane. No, we had several complaints, I've written to Norfolk County Council myself and say, this is really busy, I've been done to accept that.
What I would suggest is we, we reiterate our previous objections subject to the archaeological thing, which has now had a bit more guidance given to it. Um, we should then obviously back up what you're saying, Chris, that you're still, you know, digging heels in on that one, which is.
I think it's just that it's not really the business of the lane, whi- which is, it's that access between that bungalow type thing, you're coming out almost blind.
Yeah, which is one of the comments of Tony at A there, there's not.
That's right, yeah. It, it's incredible to me that Norfolk County Council say that's a quiet load, so why do they put traffic car in it? This could never work out.
But then. Berry Road, Mill Road, because it's, it's. It's a road.
It comes down a Mill Lane, the, the actual, by the bungalows, it's a Mill Lane. And it's, it, it's reasonably quicky, quick moving traffic, and it's, it's, it's blind at that particular point.
What is the more, uh, would you come there? Well, the church yard will be left in situ, you put a road, access road over the top of it, but so, you know, what the proposal is. But are we happy to object, I say subject to what we've done in the past, um, inducing our objection in terms of the archaeological side, because that has been given some.
So you want to say that, um, previous TTC objections remain, however. Uh, they recognise that archaeological concerns have been addressed.
Where have they been addressed then?
Well, I don't know, you know.
Remain.
No.
Previous objections remain.
On the archaeological.
So this, this was one of our objections, wasn't it?
Yeah.
The archaeology, and what they're doing is they're, they're gonna try and assuage us by doing that bit of archaeological dig. To say, well, we've done that bit now, you know, let's move on, and then, you know, whittling down our objections, really.
The other things still apply, that is the same.
Yeah.
And it's thinking that the, the traffic is, is good major.
I, I think if we do put in there, uh, if I may, that we're gonna, our existing Tepe Town Council stuff still exists, we need to relist that, just to make sure it's appropriate.
Which includes the large volume of traffic, um, and the, the splies, visibility splies.
Interesting to go down there and just measure the width of that exit. Because it's, it's, it's one car, it's not two cars, you can't get two cars going down there.
When this did come up, we did have the dimensions, um.
Yeah.
Disgusting, we.
Yeah.
It's, it's a very, yeah, it's a foundations that you won't see, there's no, no.
It's very wild.
Yeah. Only when they do the trial trenches, did they come across the.
In fact, you'll be, uh, that's another thing we talked about before, you'll be very lucky to find a wall that's listed.
Hmm.
On its own, we've got some really old historic walls, but they're not listed.
No.
The properties might be.
So if I put previous objections remain extent and relist the objection.
Relist them, yeah.
It's taking the highways, you want a good slack.
And I'll spell with large correct.
Yes. But I suppose you've got those to hand, have you, the?
I can find them for.
I think then we all know what we are.
Letting ourselves in for. So, yeah.
I'm Jake's son, Chris, in there.
What's an entering hazard, how old are you?
You don't know what we're talking about.
The Mary Church.
No, no. The Mill Lane, the, the Mary Church is on Berry Road, pitchhead.
And that's one too few to Berry Road and Mill Road.
Which is, if you go along Berry Road now, between up fifty seven fifty nine, it's a gap, it's where Simmons Dairy used to be, and it comes, you have to go along it between.
Skinner's and the church.
Between fifty seven and fifty nine, further along, okay, there's a gap between them two, where Simmons Dairy used to be.
You've got to go past the, the old funeral rectus and then one of them there, you've got to go past them, turn down it. Are you beyond the church?
Our previous objection. Overdevelopment with a small house and amenity sizes, we supported the highway officer's comments and conditions with the exception of.
Right, can we just every ocean to the part?
Okay, so our previous, previous objections were that it was an overdevelopment with a small house and amenity sizes. We supported the highway officer's comments and conditions with the exception of Mill Lane classification, which needs revision due to the large volume of traffic. Concerns about destruction of a scheduled ancient monument in a conservation area, and that we supported it for our people's comments.
When the, when the heritage officer, or I can't remember the title, has reported and said, it's fine, you can put a road over the top of it and carry on. Is there any point us still objecting to on that point? On the estate.
I guess it's the fact that, that the person who said that is the consultant that the pla- that the planning, the, the company that's applying for it have used it. Who is a well renowned consultant, that, you know, is used regularly, presented, um.
But we don't know whether that's been accepted by the state.
No, but we, you know, the council's still allowed to have its own opinion on that.
Right, thank you.
Have you not changed the thing that we do not support the highways?
Would you support the other comments on highways, don't you?
Uh, I'm considering other comments, I want.
Let me just go back and find.
Because I mean, there are other comments that are certainly not a rule.
Do we want to reiterate that putting a road over the top of everything doesn't address the concerns? Justification of the same.
The thing is, is there's a whole document on it, and they are talking about. I mean, I've just picked things out of it, it's like a sixteen page document. Did send it out. Um, so what did they say, the, um, they said that. Um, the applicant has demonstrated that a visibility of two point four times four meter is, is available to the south of the access, the approaching traffic direction. And two point two metres by forty three is the property access without crossing third party land. The provision of a two point four parallel visible display across the roadside frontage, not two point two as shown on previous drawing. Will have added the highway safety benefit of securing visibility for number twenty two Mill Lane in the approaching traffic direction, as well as number twenty four to the south of the site. Whilst the four point five metre access width would allow two cars to pass, it would not allow a car and delivery vehicle to pass. He therefore recommends that notwithstanding the submitted details, the access should achieve four point eight metres for the first ten metres. And he said, if you're, if you're minded to grant the approval, please impose the following conditions, and that's prior to the first occupation. Um, permitted, the access crossing shall be constructed in accordance with a detailed scale to be agreed in writing with the local planning authority. That the minimum width of four point eight for the first ten metres and thereafter retained at the position shown on the approved plan. Erosion shall be made for surface water drainage to be intercepted and disposal of separately, so that it can, does not discharge from or onto the highway. So vehicular access to and egress from the adjoining highway shall be limited to the access from Mill Lane. Only the access onto Berry Road shall be permanently closed to vehicular traffic. And the footway shall be reinstated in accordance with the detail scheme to be agreed with the local planning authority. And a la- a couple more, part of the first occupation, the development, um, permitted a two point five metre parallel visibility display. As measured back from the rear edge of the adjacent highway, shall be provided across the whole of the site's roadside frontage. And the splash show thereafter be maintained at all time. And the display shall thereafter be maintained at all times free from any obstruction exceeding one point three or five metres above the level of the adjacent highway carriage. Prior to first occupation, the development hereby permitted the proposed access parking area shall be laid out, demarcated, levelled, surfaced and drained in before, um, anything start, uh, uh, the occupation. And development shall not commence until a scheme detailing provision for onsite parking for construction workers and for the delivery and storage of materials for duration of the construction period has been submitted to and approved in writing by the local planning authority. And, oh, it's still going, sorry, um. So, uh, and the last one is notwithstanding the details indicated on the submitted drawings, no works above slab level shall commence onsite unless otherwise agreed in writing until detailed, until detailed drawings for the widening of the footpath along the Mill Lane frontage and closure of access onto Berry Road have been submitted and approved. So they're the comments we agreed with previously, except for we didn't consider it to be a quiet road, that we thought that needed to be reviewed because it is in fact a busy road.
On the, here on the displaying for the visibility and stuff, that's great if nothing decides they're going to park on that road. Now, there's no double yellow lines, anyone can park a car on that road and their visibility areas have just gone. Because a van's decided to park there or a car's decided to park there. I think it's hazardous, I think that's wrong.
There, there were two trailers on that road for a very long time.
Long time, it's a word.
Long time.
Yeah, it took, I give it a minute. It's always, not always, but there's very, very frequently cars parked along there and, yeah, you know, they can say they'll do this or do that, but anyone can park there at any time.
There's no reason for us not to ask for parking restrictions to be put by that, um, entrance. Because at the moment, we, we've not touched upon that, um, we, we, we could say, yeah.
Also request that parking restrictions be put on.
So to maintain the visibility display that.
But I, I don't want to get the lines ever ready outside the birth underload, side of it to be a service car.
Hmm.
So, put the plate to down. I mean, okay, the technical side of the highway scene, I can't park it because I'm not expert. I mean, it's just a classification of that road.
Yeah, which we, we're still, I mean, um, against that classification, which we did work before. But I think the visibility display is something that, you know, the highway guy has got all the technical zarts. But David's right, we can say that, you know, that they'll get rubbish if they've got a car parked at the edges to it. So you, you do need to maintain the visibility.
It's not going to be like bringing a merge, way to deliver.
Okay, so I think we're there then.
So previous, so, so as we said before, previous objections remain extent. Relist though, and also request that, um, parking restrictions be put on the entrance to provoke, to.
Maintain the visibility.
Preserve visibility at all times.
Yeah. Yep. Thank you.
Can't do that quietly, so pass them on.
So, seventy four, twenty three, then, late planning applications.
Yes, there is an two that I have actually sent out. And they're on the, um, let's see, the second. The second one, so the first one is, oh, let me just move this along. Uh, the first one is, um, a change of branding signs at B and Q at the Forest Retail Park on London Road. And that's the, um, is this, um, is this cuts, is it we've gone from extra strong mince to thick? Just wondering, so, um.
In fact, I'm just not as tight as you.
These are, these are the current, the current signage. And they are moving to, um, this is the signs, eleven signs, places that they're changing the signage. And the posts they're putting them into should be interested in the spec of the posts. So this is the new disabled parking spaces signage. None of the signage is illuminated. Um, and then we have the new welcome boards. Existing and.
I think it would be straight up, that one.
Allegedly. I cannot confirm or deny if that will be the case.
A DIY company.
Yes. Uh, and this is the new delivery signage. And the new trolley parks.
They've got a Ramar Trolley Park signage.
Yeah.
I'm really surprised that that place has been able to, you come out of the front of that, you massive great heavy trolley and it's slow.
It's slow, yeah.
Yeah.
Hmm, yeah. With drainage thing. And many of it's.
Quite a lot of immunity colours given, actually.
So I think presumably it's just a supporter, aren't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So basically.
Yeah. So the second one is for the old golf house. Retenary group, um, on Brandon Road. And they want to install three new external air conditioning units. So this is the site, um. You have to look very closely because it's very little. So this is where they're showing where the current air conditioning units are. And, uh, the next one is in the little bits in pink, if you can see that, there's three. So it's the same, basically the same as the last one, but they've got this little pink one by the door at the bottom left as well. And, uh, this is the existing. And, so you have to look very carefully because it's a dilly weedy map. Uh, or is it on there as well? I can't see on that one. Yeah, tiny pink bits that show you where the, the new bits are going to go on the elevations. Oh, no, wait a minute, here we go. Can you spot them? There's a pink bit there.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So, so the only one from the road is south elevation, I think.
So that's one of the ones that's already there. Yeah.
So, anyway.
Yeah.
We have it support. I've had to turn that noise, if there was any additional noise, that's all. We've got any data on that?
It's, it's quite a long way from the residence, I would say.
How the mule has come to be quite odd, right, to me. So, as the paths deserted, probably.
It's not, it's not far from the places on the, even that thing, but.
It's not far from residence, to be honest.
No.
Um. But that would be my only worry would be the additional noise if they're externally, if the motors are out. If the whole.
That unit's on the outside.
Whole units on the outside.
I see your point, but it was very noisy, would still do the animals coming in. It's going to fit with, you know, that's animals on a constant basis, which is going to be allowed, it's going to be a problem for that own work.
But we, we could support subject to, um.
Any, any objections to any of the neighbours?
Don't think anything's come forward, is it?
No, so you don't have it subject to neighbours.
Be on their behalf and if there is nobody else.
I'm providing those levels are acceptable. So, uh, it's subject to these comments.
I'm just wondering if it's either aims comments or do you go in the environmental health, um, noise levels? There must be a level which is acceptable.
Then it's, then it's kind of all the balls of it. So, and I'm sure by the way that it's for. The way that it's, they have.
Is he ruled out? Or don't you build here and?
Yeah, yes, and stuff.
Yeah, of course.
Well, you don't, don't be parking, not when you're happy.
Well, that one gives us still.
No, trust me, our internal is a lot louder than that.
Everyone's like, oh, long time, like, she did it, did it.
Uh, there, there hasn't been any additional requested and there's no comments thus far.
I wouldn't request a caveat then if, if local residents have any express standing concern.
I mean, subject to neighbours' comments is a fairly safe.
We're thinking, really, is it?
But it was terribly nice, it'll be probably the first last comment.
Sounds seems too late.
Are you going supporter?
I think go to support, um, and just, I think, demonstration that it's within the acceptable limits, noise limits.
Yeah.
Subject to meeting noise requirement.
Yeah.
We're just saying sort of big other practices, weren't we?
Yeah, no. Did, yeah.
Meeting environmental noise requirement, yeah.
Noise or disturbance resulting from use including proposed hours of operation. Pretty bland, really, isn't it? Like the traffic noise or nothing like, can we have a go?
Okay.
So that's those two then, so moving on to seventy five, twenty three, decisions of variance.
Having a.
None of those, no, seventy six, twenty three, items to be referred to the Greater Temple Partnership. Last month, we talked about the Omas, um, being something to be discussed. Great Temple Partnership hasn't met yet, the next trading week, I think it's seventh of January.
But I did put that in rather set fit officer indirectly to Theresa, but I saw requests that we put forward.
There's nothing coming forward from this meeting and we want additional to be brought up.
Okay, well.
I, I'm wondering if we could bring in the. The way that, we, we had the county council looking at their transport strategy and I think Terry's trying to get Robert to put forward a thing, but would that come through? Um. How Great Temple Partnership is going to support the cycling strategy? Because at the moment, there's no money for it, it's purely an off the shelf thing, isn't it?
Because, um, I don't know if you remember that GTP and Robert put into that as well, produced a green infrastructure report.
Yeah.
Um, so I have asked for that to be kind of like produced as another supporting paper we can look at, because there was a whole one done and I did a list of green projects, didn't I, from previous consultations?
But I was concerned that when we had the consultation with the Norfolk County Council up at Sports Centre, it was quite clearly there's no money for this, they were just getting these things on the shelf potentially to, to be. Whereas we ought to be pressing for something in the short term for, for improvement inside the part of the Great Temple Partnership. Obviously, there's no money there, but.
They managed to find money, they were going to find money and after to make the consultation about the twenty minute neighbourhoods. I wonder if they could actually put the money from that call for legend to actually make the cycle.
So maybe we've been just asked for an update.
Have I just, it's me, I suppose.
Even the, the, the county council are looking at this. If, if, if only you'll give me a, a way of discussing with them.
An update on GTP, so would you like me to write to Richard? And one who's just been going out of the room and asking, just having some of my considerations.
Right, from the Norman, isn't it, from county to ask him what he's proposing to on Sky Awards, because I think, I think.
Because he was part of that development of the infrastructure paper as well.
Need to be question a bit of that. Okay, seventy seven, twenty three, community engagement, anything you want to shout about?
What about the, it says at the fish bar, could that come over on plan a bit? Could that be good provision? No, we don't, ignore that then.
No, because you don't even, you don't even have to pu- apply for planning permission because the planning authority is not the statutory authority.
But under amenities, that could be put.
Let me do the site takeover on Thursday first and then we can sign. Just in case. I've got to do the site takeover meeting on Thursday. Sign on the dotted line to take responsibility.
Okay, seventy eight, twenty three, committee officers update.
Um, the only thing I've got to update is, um, funny being a, um, hot topic. I wrote to Breckland to check what our S one O six coffers look like. And there is nothing in our S one O six coffers. We don't have any.
Budgets?
Anything, no.
So when people plan things, usually they have to make a contribution, put under section one O six to provide extra amenities if, if they've got, no play area, so it's contribution out or local libraries or anything. So it could be a number of different hats that they get, but it's all been administered by Breckland. Many years ago, it all went into a pot.
Yeah.
More recently, they have earmarked it for the, the area or the town where the development happened. Um, we've always had this concern or you've earmarked this money, how is it ever spent? So we now can follow up and see what section one O six money are still there to be spent for the benefit of them.
Because, because in other places, they have SIL rather than S one O six. And, um, the developers, like if they wanted money for a play park, the developers have the choice to either do the play park and manage the play park themselves or try and get somebody else to take over the responsibility for that. And, and recently, the recent ones we've had done like down on Berry Road and things like that, the actual developers have taken the money themselves and done the actual play amenities themselves and kept the responsibility for it. The, um, S one O six money for the S U E remains with Breckland and with the Land Management Company. That is continuing to land, because although we've taken over the parish, we as a town council have no responsibility for the maintenance of the land or any of the assets.
Was that a surprise, there was no money?
No. So, I mean, down in your development, I'm being spoken to, shouldn't be, or shall we go into the S one O six? No. Well, we, well, there, there is S one O six money, but we're not managing any of the land, so it won't come to us. It will go to whoever's ever managing that, okay?
Chris.
We do have a neighbourhood plan, local plan, don't we?
We have a local plan, we don't have a neighbourhood plan.
If I put this right, then if we have a local plan, we can put in for this community infrastructure levy?
There's SIL, we don't have SIL in Breckland, they don't do SIL.
Can we change to that for one O six or does Breckland?
No, Breckland will tackle it. And we, we have, remember, we didn't do a neighbourhood plan because we already had the there, uh, Setford Area Action Plan that's already been taken, uh, superseded by the local plan, because basically they adopted the Setford Area Action Plan into the local plan. So therefore, if we did a neighbourhood plan, it would still be below the local plan, because the local plan's already adopted our other plans. But SIL, you have the, basically, the, just the planning authority can either do SIL or S one O six and Breckland do S one O six.
That's a shame because we could dominate stuff to spend still.
Do we anticipate any S one O six money coming from Kingsley?
No.
None at all, but there, there will be S one O six money, but it won't be coming by then.
But it won't be coming to us, because we don't manage the land or the assets.
I think there's enhancement to the A L F injunctions of that, which will go to Highlands Authority in that contribution, but it will never come via us.
No, and it confuses me a little bit because the whole, you know, the, the limitations of the, of, you know, not feeling to clocks and make sure making things fleeting to test, we're like, bringing on more councils to cover there, so basically because desperate, so why is the one O six and the money in the running group? Because we don't look after the land, so we don't look after the slave hawks, we don't look after the open spaces, we don't do the bins, we don't do the street furniture. Currently doing all this. Uh, I think it's.
Pigeon.
Pigeon, yeah, the, well, it's. Setford man, well, currently there is no sign of that changing.
You know, we, we as a council haven't put, you know, when the street lights came up, we said we, we don't want, because we can't afford to do it. You've got to give us no money to do it. So we're resisting on taking any more responsibility, we've got no funding to go with it. It's like getting the housing market, the money stops. The housing market stops.
It's fun building a play park, but it won't be maintained forever. We don't have money to do that.
Well, the thing is, is play parks are the responsibility of district by law, I believe that.
They started building a play park on Kingsley and then it stopped.
Yeah. But it's not necessarily the local council that looks after the amenities. Because like cemeteries, that's district as well. So they're the burial authority, they're the planning authority, so all the play parks and everything, street lighting, all that belongs to district. But it, but currently, it is the Setford Management Group or whatever they call themselves that manage all the open space and all. that manage all the open space and all the amenities and all the street furniture. So we, as a town council, are not responsible for the maintenance of anything on that. So in other words.
Just said Chris Dunning.
What about the allotments?
No, that's them as well, because allotments, the allotments don't have to be town council, they can be anybody.
I thought you had a statute giving this a point.
It's been our mandate, isn't it? It's been our reading.
No, you only, you don't have to, no.
It's on our website that we do.
We have to provide what we are responsible for, which is what we do.
Yeah, the ones over there, we're not going to be.
No, because we, yeah, because we don't, we, we're not responsible for the land.
Oh, that's a bit, not too bad then.
Carla, sorry.
No, that's all right, I was just going to say, yes, I, I'm curious that, um, every council, the residents will complain to the test, but to the local authority, it's a test for town council. But ultimately, we don't manage anything and we have no say on anything. But the, the residents will still come to us because it's become part of the test, but you can't win.
The thing is, is then the councils will redirect to the appropriate management people, um, uh. And I don't, I don't know what the long term plan for that is. Breckland council may be in a better position for it.
Similar to Cloverfield, really, we've got very little as a town council on Cloverfield, um, we're responsible for.
Most of that's Breckland as well.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank everybody for their attendance, I'm going to meet and close, thank you all much.
You keep, sir. We'll leave you here. I would like to say, I'll take this.
Yeah, good. Thanks to Alan and Tina for, uh, for setting it up.